Test, test, testing, one, two, testing. Testing, one, two, three. Test, test, testing, one, two, three.
Wow.
Yeah. Wow. I don't say it was.
It was...
I now am pleased to introduce councillor Blois, who will introduce the singers for this song. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am pleased to introduce you to the choir of Mr. Boiley and Julia Capelli, Sebastian Roy, Camille Daho and Victoria Upton are all students from the Garnaut Secondary School in Orleans. They've been singing together for three years. Each member took a music course in the school. Outside of their rehearsals, they take part in many other activities. Sebastian and Julia are the goaltender of their soccer team. Camille takes language courses and Victoria is finishing her piano studies. Thank you to all the musicians from Garnaut and councillor for choosing that group this morning.
Members of council who are wearing pink, this is Wear Pink Day and appreciate the work that councillor Hubley has done on the anti-bullying issues in our community. So, thank you councillor Hubley. I'd now ask David Vesey to join us at the front as we present this week's Mayor's City Builder Award. And David has some family and friends with him here today as well. David, welcome. Come on over here. And we'll ask David's councillor Jan Harder to be with us, who is a great supporter. I think you actually live in councillor De Rush's ward, as I understand it. Councillor De Rush is representing the city at Roma and the Ontario Good Roads Association.
I live in councillor De Rush's ward, too.
That's right. So, there you go. You both live in...
I used to live in my ward. So did he.
Monsieur Vesey est un bénévole connu. He's a well-known volunteer in the Pion Barhaven area and he dedicates hundreds of hours every year to the happiness of children in his community.
He has been the president of the Barhavens Children's Softball Organisation and under his leadership, the league has grown to the largest of its kind in all of Ontario, which is very impressive. And he also serves as the children's activity coordinator at the Barhaven Canada Day. And anyone who's been to Barhaven Canada Day knows what a great event, the thousands of people that come and the kids that get so excited. So, thank you, David, for doing that. Whatever job is needed to be done, David always volunteers to do it, no matter how big or small. He spends literally hundreds of hours learning about and implementing new ideas for practices that kids are both encouraged and having fun also while on the ice. But it's his enthusiasm and attitude that are most infectious, not for the kids but for the parents as well. In fact, when one of my employees called Mr. Vesey to tell me he won this award, it was the day the Canada-Latvia quarter-final game was taking place. It was 1-1 after two periods. Mr. Vesey joked that it was a tense time to be calling, but reassured us that whatever the outcome, he's always in a good mood because he works with 200 Timbit hockey players and you can never be sad after seeing all these kids play. It's that kind of attitude that has made Mr. Vesey beloved and essential part of Nepian minor hockey that he is. And I'm very thrilled that you and your wife and kids and their spouses and significant others and friends from Barhaven could be with you today. We're very, very proud of the work you do. I know that you do this not for the awards but for the love of the kids that you have and the love of sport. And thank you for the great work you do and congratulations.
First of all, thank you, Jan and Mayor Watson, for an amazing honour. Anyone who knows me, I'm not used to being uncomfortable. In fact, I'm not used to necessarily needing a mic because I just retired after 35 years of teaching high school. And it was really nice you had high school kids here to make me feel more comfortable. I was thinking about, because I know I only have about a minute to speak to council, a lot of the charity work I've done over the last probably 45 years of doing charity work has been centred on sport. And I think sometimes we hear that, you know, healthy living message and it's true. But sport's way more than that. You talked about the parents. When kids are on my Timbit team and I've taught, I think, or coached 100 teams in my coaching career, it's a whole family thing. You know, families come to rinks, they come to ball diamonds. And I think some days when we're promoting the healthy lifestyle, we need to remember that we're promoting healthy family lifestyles. But you can't do that without facilities, as you know. And that's where you guys come in. That's where the city comes in. It's kind of build it and they will come. I guarantee if you build it and staff it with the kind of staff you have and Mayor Watson, you have no idea, well, maybe you do, how amazing, and I mean exemplary amazing, your Parks and Rec people are, your citywide allocations are, but especially the young guys driving those Zambonis who throw extra nets out for me, who don't laugh when I've got, never mind those other things I bring out on ice that are kind of amusing. If you give me facilities and if you give me these amazing staff, I can give you 1,000 volunteers to run the best programmes you've ever seen. But like everything else, those facilities are tied to fiscal decisions. And lately, we all know you guys have had some very tough fiscal decisions to make. So, don't forget all those families who want to watch their kids play sports. And thank you again for this tremendous honour. I feel a little funny because I'm not used to... Teachers never get honours, right? We're just working the class trying to make everybody else look better. But thank you again. See, I didn't go over time, Jan. I didn't take like three hours and stuff. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you again very much, David and councillor Harder. Roll call, please, Madam Deputy Clerk.
Consulier Minette.
Yes.
Councillor Blois. Councillor Harder.
Here.
Councillor Wilkinson.
Present.
Councillor Elshantiri.
Present.
Councillor Cadri.
Here.
Councillor Taylor.
Here.
Councillor Shirelli.
Here.
Councillor Egli.
Here.
Councillor Deans.
Here.
Councillor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
You see.
Councillor Clarke.
O si.
Councillor Holmes.
Here.
Councillor Hobbs.
Here.
Councillor McCrae.
Here.
Councillor Chernyschenko.
Councillor Hume.
Consulier Blay.
Present.
Councillor Thompson.
Councillor Moffett.
Here.
Consulier De Rush.
Councillor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Look, I might attend, Monsieur Le Maire.
Merci.
You have quorum.
The February 2014 carried declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declarations de conflits d'intérêt. Seeing none. Communications as presented. Response to inquiries as presented. Regrets councillors Thompson and De Rush advise he'll be absent from the council meeting of February 28 due to city business. They are both at the Roma OGRA conference in Toronto. A motion to introduce reports councillor Moffett, I believe.
That the reports from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update, Council Inquiries and Motions for the Period Ending 21st of February 2014, Community Protective Services Committee Report 29, Environment Committee Report 27, Plan Committee Report 65A and Transit Commission Report 24 be received and considered.
Carried. Postponements and deferrals. I'm going to ask councillor Elshantiri to take the chair. As most of you know, there's the big city mayor's caucus that we're hosting today. So, I'll be rejoining my colleagues at that meeting. And I thank councillor Eli Elshantiri. Yeah, and I should just remind colleagues that our March Fedco meeting, because it's a long agenda and many items of interest to all members, will have the Fedco meeting here in the council chambers. So, if you can attend that meeting, it would be very helpful because when you look through the agenda item, there are a number of significant items that we're going to be discussing. And we want to make sure every member of council has a seat around the table. So, I thank my colleague Elshantiri.
Good luck, Mr. Mayor.
Let's carry the agenda involved now.
We start the agenda with the postponement and deferral. We have revision to zoning bylaw 2008-250 to amend permitted residential driveway wide to our suburban communities and clarify zoning language. So, we have two motions and one technical amendment. One motion, one technical amendment. Can we carry this item?
Hold.
Hold. It's held by councillor Blois. So, go through consent agenda. And item number one, the city clerk and solicitor status update council inquiry and motions for the period ending 21st of February 2014. Is the item received? Received, thank you. Community Protective Service Committee Report 29. Item number two, Child Care Service Plan. Is the item... Okay, thank you. Item number three, Byword Market Programme Bylaw Amendment.
Actually, I wanted to speak on the other one. I'm sorry, I'm distracted by my colleague on the childcare.
Childcare, okay. We'll hold item... We'll hold item number two. Item number three, the Byword Market Programme Bylaw Amendment. Carry, thank you. Environment Committee Report 27, Ottawa River Action Plan Status Update Plan. Is the item received? Received and...
Counselor Wilkinson.
Present.
Counselor El Shantiri.
Present.
Counselor Cadri. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Shirelli.
Here.
Counselor Egli.
Here.
Counselor Deans.
Here.
Counselor Tierney.
Present.
Consulier Fleury.
You see.
Counselor Clark.
Osee.
Counselor Holmes.
Here.
Counselor Hobbs.
Here.
Counselor McCray.
Here.
Counselor Chernoshenko. Counselor Hume. Consulier Blay.
Present.
Counselor Thompson. Counselor Moffett.
Here.
Consulier Deroche. Counselor Hubley.
Here.
Mayor Watson.
You see.
Look, I'm at ten, Mr. Lamar.
Merci.
You have quorum.
...of February 2014 carried. Declarations of interest, including those originally arising from prior meetings, declarations de conflits d'intérêt. Seeing none. Communications as presented. Response to inquiries as presented. Regrets. Counselors Thompson and Deroche advise he'll be absent from the council meeting of February 28 due to city business. They are both at the Roma OGRA conference in Toronto. A motion introduced reports, Counselor Moffett, I believe.
That the reports from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update Council inquiries and motions for the period ending 21st of February 2014, Community Protective Services Committee report 29, Environment Committee report 27, Planning Committee report 65A, and Transit Commission report 24 be received and considered.
Carried. Postponements and deferrals. I'm going to ask Counselor El Shantiri to take the chair. Most of you know there's the Big City Mayors Caucus that we're hosting today, so I'll be rejoining my colleagues at that meeting. And I thank Counselor Eli El Shantiri. Yeah, and I should just remind colleagues that our March Fedco meeting, because it's a long agenda, and many items of interest to all members, will have the Fedco meeting here in the council chambers. So if you can attend that meeting, it would be very helpful because when you look through the agenda item, there are a number of significant items that we're going to be discussing. And we want to make sure every member of council has a seat around the table. So I thank my colleague, El Shantiri.
Good luck, Mr. Mayor. We start the agenda with the postponement and deferral. We have revision to zoning bylaw 2008-250 to amend permitted residential driveway wide to our suburban communities and clarify zoning language. So we have two motions and one technical amendment, one motion, one technical amendment. Can we carry this item?
Hold.
It's held by Counselor Blowus. So we'll go through consent agenda. Item number one, the city clerk and solicitor status update council inquiry and motions for the period ending 21st February 2014. Is the item received? Received, thank you. Community Protective Service Committee report 29. Item number two, childcare service plan. Is the item carried? Thank you. Item number three, Byword Market Program bylaw amendment. Childcare, okay, we'll hold item, we'll hold item number two. Item number three, the Byword Market Program bylaw amendment. Carry? Thank you. Environment Committee report 27. Ottawa River Action Plan Status Update Plan. Is the item received? Received. Item number four, Planning Committee Report Number 65A. Number five, zoning bylaw amendment, medical marijuana production facilities. Is the item carried? Dissent. And dissent by Counselor Manette. Item number six, zoning 145, 147, 149, 151, 153, and 155, Medellans Drive. Is the item carried? Thank you. Zoning, item number seven, zoning 1111, North River Road. Is the item carried?
No. Do we wish to debate it now or hold it?
We'll hold it, Counselor. Thank you. On the bulk consent agenda, does any wish to hold any item, or we can carry the consent bulk agenda? Okay, thank you. So we'll go to Counselor Blowus, hold. So we can receive the information. This, sorry. Can we receive disposition of item approved by committee under delegated authority? Received. Thank you. We'll go to item number one, the motion. Okay, I believe Counselor Blowus held item revised to zoning bylaw. Counselor Blowus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple more questions on this. And I know we spent a lot of time on it. It's been put off from one meeting to another until some of the, some of the issues and questions could be resolved. But I think there are still unanswered questions. And I must admit, when this came around the first time, I thought, this is one way of responding to an obvious issue and an obvious need. But I think what's, what's really happened is, you know, we set certain rules and certain design in our, in our suburban areas, and then we find out it doesn't work. So the reaction is, let's just let people widen their driveways. And obviously, there are limits, a 50% limit, et cetera. But there are impacts. And for every, I guess for every action is a reaction. So I got to ask you again. I mentioned at the, at planning meeting, I asked about the, the operational costs with respect to snow storage, snow removal, et cetera. There are operational costs. Can you remind me how we're going to accommodate that? How we're going to, how we're going to, first of all, quantify that and how we're going to acknowledge, acknowledge it in our budget?
Can we get a mic for Mr. Riley?
Through the mayor. With the changes that we've made, I think the, the impact will be fairly minor. So we're only talking about retrofitting existing properties, and new builds will be covered off in another report, Building Better Suburbs. Also, with the 50% rule, the neighborhoods we're getting most of these issues are the high-density neighborhoods where they couldn't, they couldn't meet that 50% rule. In fact, oftentimes, their frontage doesn't meet it now. So where we're having the severe snow storage issues, the widening of driveways wouldn't be applicable through the, the guidelines that have been set up by planning. Okay, and that's, and I think that's a valid point. The other issue, of course, is if, if we create more hard surfaces, we're already, we're having some issues with stormwater runoff as it is. And the more hard surfaces or impervious surfaces that we're building, the greater the runoff probably is. And we noticed last week in the, when we had the, the rainstorm and melt, there were areas where our storm sewers were backed up already. Has anybody given thought to how this would, let's say, worsen the situation? Through you, Mr. Mayor. The 50% limit on driveways has not been changed. What has been changed is the flexibility of where that 50% can be located. So strictly speaking, in areas where people will be allowed to do this and have that extra flexibility, there might be a little extra stormwater impact. But that's already been anticipated in the zoning bylaw, and the provision of the 50% width is not being changed.
But we're, we're having to go back and recalculate, for instance, stormwater ponds that were approved within, well, since amalgamation, that are no longer sufficient to hold, to hold stormwater runoff in new communities. And we're going back and recalculating. And these were approved by the MOE, built, built by either us or developers on our behalf. So I would think that every additional drop of water in there becomes a concern to us.
Mr. Mayor, yes, I think we recognize that. I think we'll be looking, that issue is one of the ones we'll be dealing with, with, as we move forward with the, you know, better, better and smarter suburbs project. We also look, you know, we're looking to, you know, widen these driveways. We're also looking at, you know, using, you know, impervious materials to be able to do that, you know, other, you know, other countermeasures that, you know, don't just encourage the, the direct runoff. So, you know, it's an issue we're aware of, an issue we're going to be dealing with as we look, you know, in the future, over the next few months, in terms of bringing forward our report on the, you know, the better, smarter suburbs. And that's an issue we're dealing with.
So just as part of that, one of, one of the things that we've been dealing with, for instance, we've had people who've expanded the driveways. And in the past year or so prior to this initiative coming on, we went back and had them undo what they had done. And most of them will say, well, I didn't know I needed, A, couldn't do it, needed a permit or anything else. Or is there any provision that you're looking at, then, that in the future, we advise people very clearly when they move into a new neighborhood, into a new suburb, this is what you can and can't do? Because most of them plead ignorance. I mean, they've converted garages into an extra room. They've widened the driveway in order to accommodate the vehicle because there's no more, no longer garage. And basically, they go, well, nobody told us that we couldn't do this. So what's, how do we address that?
Mr. Mayor, we agree that it's an ongoing communication effort that we have to continue undertaking, and we will be pursuing that as part of the Building Better Suburbs. And we're also having discussions with the industry to make sure that all of the relevant information is incorporated in sales packages.
Okay, and that was going to be my next point, that we need to put the, as, as places are being sold, there has to be an onus on the seller or the developer, the builder, to ensure that that information is in the, in the purchase agreement and that somehow it's highlighted in. And I realize they got 1,000 clauses, and they're not going to see it. But, okay, and I won't comment on bylaw, parking bylaw enforcement because that's an ongoing issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be dissenting on this.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Blow, Counselor, sorry, Counselor Fleury.
Monsieur, Monsieur Président.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Question on this. So I've read the report. It's obviously not in the urban area, but we've lived some of those impacts of extended front yard parkings. And I have key questions. So what I understand of the report is that you have your driveway, and you have a maximum of 1.8 meter access to your front door, basically. Now we're allowing that to be side by side, and we're allowing someone to park a car. I understand that of the report. What I'm not clear about is what we used to allow and what we're not allowing related to half, in the report it says half of the frontage can be a driveway. But now there appears to be a subtle difference that it says half of the front yard. That's quite the difference from a building frontage to a front yard that can expand to a, to a much wider percentage or much wider actual meter in terms of a driveway. Could you clarify for me?
Certainly, yeah, Mr. Mayor, through you. The 50% applies to the lot width, not to the, to the width of the building itself. So that is not changing. And I do want to point out that you're quite right, that these proposed regulations apply only to the communities that are outside the green belt to recognize unique circumstances and rates of car ownership that exist in those communities. We would not be applying the same rules to the inside green belt area.
Okay, thank you. Merci, Consulier. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Like my colleague, I, I'm not too worried about the, the notion that stormwater management ponds won't be adequate. I think the one off Tenth Line Road near Charlemagne is built for the 200-year storm, thanks to Counselor Manette's strong council voice at the time. Also, it's called the crater, not stormwater management pond. But I will tell you that I'm not, I have to be sanguine about widening the amount of, of car space anywhere. I drove along one in the core area yesterday, where we constantly have to go and take trucks to take away the snow because there's no place to put it. They've used, the driveway takes up the driveway or parking space, all parked in the front lawn. And this is probably done just as Counselor Blowus describes, in innocent belief that they could do whatever the heck they wanted. Well, I have here a, a letter from one of these citizens who, who said, "My house, at 100-plus years old, sits on a lot that was subdivided 20 years ago, and due to the way it was subdivided, does not have room for parking anywhere other than in the front yard. We believe our parking is grandfathered on the old exception, but a bylaw officer indicated the city disagreed." Well, can somebody tell me, does the city, has the city disagreed 20 years after the fact? And if so, who's right? Mr. Moser?
Mr. Mayor, we'd need some more details in terms of where it is. The old city of Ottawa had, you know, a detailed process in terms of how you determine whether you've established rights for front yard parking. There has to be ability to prove it was in place before the, you know, the bylaw was in place. So we'd have to look at the individual circumstances and determine whether or not they have a right or not to provide the front yard parking.
On this block alone, I would suggest that you might have to determine that for 90% of the houses. And that, that worries me a little bit if we're going to go after the fact and try to do something about it. We have enough problems trying to get the bylaws just to, to deal with real problems that are in these ones. And, and I'm really surprised that you have a roads person with you today, and he's not out filling potholes, but that's enough.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, Counselor. One of the problems of this one, of course, is not really going to resolve the problems of parking in the areas where the parking is the worst, which is the townhouse areas. And I just was wondering how, and that's where we get a lot of complaints, I'm sure you do as well, because there isn't space for the snow, there isn't space to park, there isn't space. And people, we don't have bus service in many of these areas. So if they say people are supposed to take transit, well, you can't take transit if the transit's not there. Or if you have to walk for 30 minutes to get to the transit, not many people in the wintertime are going to do that. So it's an interim. I'm really more interested in what's going to come forward in the fall with the new standards for the, in development outside the green, or new areas at least, what we try to put it. You can't, I think, anymore, and the city has this fixation about people taking transit and doesn't want to provide a lot of parking areas. But if you haven't got the transit in the newer areas, and we don't, then we've got to have sufficient space for cars so we don't have this problem in the future. As in, 50% of a townhouse area is not going to allow them to double their driveway wide, because they're not that wide. I'm interested in what's going to happen to the ones that have already gone in and virtually paved their entire front yard. I know bylaw have waited to deal with this. Is this going to be something they're going to take up afterwards? Or how are we going to deal with the problems that already exist where people have done it illegally? Does anybody have an answer to that? No?
Hi, sir. Oui, may I excuse? Nous attendions que la modification soit adoptée. Mais pour ce qui est des cas où il s'agit de 50%, où ceux qui sont asphaltés à 100%, nous avons pris des mesures contre eux. Vous le faites seulement si quelqu'un se plaint, n'est-ce pas? Si personne ne se plaint, il n'y a pas de poursuite, c'est exact. Parce qu'il y a bien sûr une incidence sur la quantité de neige, parce qu'il y a eu beaucoup de neige cette année, ça cause un problème. Je sais que vous faites votre travail autant que possible, mais c'est épineux. Et les gens qui le font essaient de retirer leur voiture de la rue, mais les voisins ne sont pas très contents. Je n'aime pas voir des chicanes de voisins. Il y a quelqu'un qui m'a contacté en disant...
Because of this new policy, and in a townhouse area, I don't see much happening at all because of the width of the lots. And people are asking me, you know, how wide is our lot, et cetera, et cetera. So I think there may be some need to have some information going out to the public and making it very clear. I've told people, once this is passed, they can go on the website and get the information to do that. So I'm hoping that very soon we'll have a section of the website that will say rules about widening the driveways, et cetera. Is that going to happen quickly so that they don't, because people are, right now, they're, they all sorts of little things talking about out there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We will be developing an information package. Once the appeal period is cleared, it will be made available.
Well, that will be online, so people can get the information there.
That's correct. And we can further provide paragraphs for Counselors' weeklys or other communications that...
That would be very helpful. And also, if you can make sure online, that if they are going to do any widening, that gives, the process of how to go about doing it is made there so they won't, because I know it's not a permit type of thing, but there should be something that they have to, because we're talking about materials used, all of that type of thing. And like I have one right now, people said they put gravel down, and that they, when they have the company that comes, the snow blower to blow it, they're blowing, they've actually damaged the neighbor's car with it because they've blow the gravel too. So there's all sorts of things out there.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Egli.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. Firstly, with, with the various departments talking during the adjournment period that we had since this last came to, to committee, or to council, rather, is there any thought that this kind of approach would be expanded to other parts of the city? In other words, are the neighborhoods within the green belt, if a similar request came forward, that you'd look at, at doing that?
At this point, Mr. Mayor, no, we would not be entertaining that, that possibility.
Okay, and the second question is, the proposal that initially came forward was, was quite a bit broader than this. And then operations and planning spoke about sort of a retrofit approach, which is what's before us today. Is this, though, only an interim discussion or decision that we're making? And when the Building Better Suburbs or whatever the program, are we going to have this discussion all over again? And are we still going to be facing the same cost? I'm assuming that, that operations said this works because there's not going to be that much of an increased cost. But are we going to be having the same discussion six months from now, whenever that report comes forward, and looking at doing it more broad-based, as, as was set out in the original proposal?
The objective, Mr. Mayor, of the Building Better Suburbs study is to avoid this type of logistical challenges from the word go when a new community is developed. So we will be having a discussion that, as we intend, we'll make sure that we tackle these logistical questions so that, right at construction, we don't have to deal with the types of situations that we're now having to come back and address.
So this vote today, in effect, ends this issue. And we take a forward-looking approach when, when Mr. Moser's report comes forward?
Well, Mr. Mayor, that's right. I mean, the, the motion that's before council today will have those new rules applied to properties with a dwelling that is built and occupied as of the last day of December of 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Egli. Counselor McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought, given this report references winter operations, I'd take the chance, while Kevin Wadley was here, to thank him and his team for the outstanding job that they've done and continue to do this winter dealing with our streets. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Well said. Counselor Shirenchenko?
As we've seen with the end of the last mine, isn't so much a question as a, as a comment on this issue. I think this report, this recommendation finds an uneasy compromise. I think the point that I really want to, to make is that the question of finding adequate parking on your own parking on your own lot, on your own site, is something that people, wherever they live in the city, will face. And people's needs change. You purchase a home or rent a home, knowing how much parking comes with it, but if your needs change substantially, you have a couple of options. One is you find alternative arrangements for that vehicle. The other is that you move to a place that provides additional parking, but we cannot be in a position, as a city, to keep accommodating on the site loss of green space, loss of permeability of the rainwater, loss of snow storage, etc., and on-street parking when people's needs for additional vehicles continue to grow. There has to be another way than loading the site with vehicles. And I think that this isn't an inside-the-green-belt, outside-the-green-belt issue, it's something we're facing in all our neighborhoods. So I want to thank staff for where we're at now in terms of the recommendations here. And certainly, we all look forward to both the Better Suburbs, getting the title quite right, work and report, as well as those of us in the urban corps due to the ongoing work we're doing with infill guidelines and parking issues there. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Shcherchenko. So we have in front of us one technical amendment moved by councillor Hobley. Yeah, I'm coming to you, councillor. And we have technical amendment moved by councillor Hobley, and second by councillor Blay. Councillor Hobley, if you would like to read their resolution, because the response was in the procedures memo, but we'd like to read, therefore, the resolution, and we can carry that item.
Okay. Therefore, be resolved that the private approach bylaw, being bylaw 2003-447, as amended, be further amended by repealing section five and substituting, therefore, the following: No permit shall be issued for a private approach, the purpose of which is to provide access to a parking space. One, which is contrary to any city bylaw, or two, created by an amendment in the zoning bylaw 2008-250, subsection 107, bracket three, bracket C, of the February 26, 2014, which allows an additional 1.8 meter of parking space in the outer suburban area, shown as Area A on Schedule 318 of the zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This is in the amendment, this is from staff, yes. So can we carry the technical amendment? Okay, thank you. Now, we have a motion from, moved by councillor Harder, second by councillor Cadre. Councillor Harder, you want to speak to it briefly?
Yes, thank you. I'm actually surprised that so much thought and effort and angst has had to go into this. It really is uniquely a suburban issue, and it's one that, as you've heard from staff, really has not, we're not changing, we're just defining. And we're doing that in advance of the whole suburban Building Better Suburbs project coming forward, which will be finalized in November of this year, at the request of bylaw. They've been having a very difficult time because where, even in the older areas of the suburbs, where new people have moved in, who have seen what other people were absolutely legally able to do in their community, when it was in Napier, or was it in Goulburn, or was it in Orleans, and now, because of a bylaw that was citywide, that was adopted in 2008? Okay. Anyone who's moved in to one of the homes that hadn't taken advantage of that, to put in some nice interlock, to, you know, scope out a curved sidewalk, etc., they were being told that it was illegal to do so. So this isn't coming forward in advance because of the situation with bylaw. I also want to tell those of you around the table, who absolutely don't represent any kind of suburbia, and yet try to understand, as we do try to understand, the more urban issues, or the rural issues, in fact, is that we don't have access to the same opportunities that you do. And for the past two winters, councillor Cadre and I have met with these very people, well, not Alan, and John, Phil Landry, other people, so, but those folks, every year, saying, "How are we going to make these communities livable? We just finished our official plan, which the whole concept was building a livable Ottawa. This is about allowing people to enjoy their own properties in a livable fashion to the best we can." And I really am, I really, quite honestly, was ticked off when this became about winter snow operations, because we have so much snow this year. I don't think the same consideration. And when it happened, I called Mr. Wiley, and I said, "Kevin, you know that right now, when people have no option but to park on the street, you have zero capacity for snow, zero." This way, when Roger and his team goes out to the suburban areas in the west, in the south end, and gives out tickets and says, "You're not allowed to do this," I can stand up, any of the suburban councillors can stand up and say, "You now have an option? You didn't take the option. And because you didn't take the option, that's what's going to happen." We absolutely can have a firmer line on where that we stand. Through the Building Better Suburbs process, bylaws and policies that were approved citywide are going to be recommended for change. Just yesterday, we had, some of us had a small gathering, councillor Cadre and I, some of the development industry, asking them, "How can we work with you to build a different suburban product that captures the densities that we need, that protects the urban boundary expansion, but does it differently so people can live in these communities we're having you build?" That's where the Building Better Suburbs is going. That's, I can promise you that. We are going to be bold, and we're going to be strong, and with the support of Chair Hume and the mayor, which I know we have, watch out. You're going to see some interesting things that are going to make our city a better place to live. So thank you very much. I hope you'll take what I said into consideration.
Thank you, councillor Harder. Councillor Shirelli? Do you need to table your motion, councillor?
I thought I was closing. Why do you need to?
No, we need councillor Harder to table the motion.
Is it up there?
Yes. You don't need to read it, just table it.
Exactly. But why isn't that up there?
So moved by councillor Harder, second by councillor Cadre.
That before I started speaking?
That's okay. Councillor Shirelli, do you have something to add to this?
Thank you, your worship. This question, recently, on a radio broadcast, the mayor indicated that he and others had met with you and discussed reducing the number of times that we do actual snow removal from the roadside in order to reduce costs, and that, in fact, this year, we were reducing the number of times we do snow removal to reduce costs. Well, if we can do that, then how can a foot beside a driveway have anywhere near that impact? Is that a question? It's a question. My voice went up.
I think, through the mayor, I think, as I stated, that the bylaws that's written now won't have much impact, it's fairly minimal.
But even before...
Our concern was that if you had new builds, where you made this the design standard, we would be losing great tracts of ability to store snore, to store, store snowage. Store? Snow. So that was the concern. And I'll admit that I didn't fully understand the bylaw. And when we discussed with PGM, we made some further amendments to it, some changes, and we can live with those changes.
Okay. But how fluid, how precise is this? It seems to me if you can just not remove snow during, after four or five snowfalls, then...
Well, no, I think...
How much impact is there by not having that space on driveways?
Through the mayor, I'm not, I'm not aware of the discussion that was held by the mayor on the radio station, but I think what I said at committee was that, "Look, we have a large cost overrun in our winter operations, and it's incumbent on us to look at ways to contain those costs." And snow removal is one area we're going to look at, because it is, frankly, the biggest pressure we have right now on cost. So that may be adjusting the snow removal to better meet our maintenance quality standards, where we're maybe exceeding those maintenance quality standards now. It may be looking at areas where we can cast the snow instead of remove the snow, those sorts of things. So I don't, I don't think we're talking about leaving snow where it shouldn't be left, I mean, where it's exceeding our maintenance quality standards.
Yeah, I didn't mean that. I meant, I meant the capacity at the curbside. If it could hold that much more, then, I just didn't see how a foot or two would make a difference.
Okay. Okay, thank you, councillor Shirelli. Now, we carry the amendment, now we need to carry the motion moved by councillor Harder, second by councillor Cadre. Is the motion carried? Carry? Dissent? Dissent from councillor Clark? No, we have three dissents, so. Aysen has been called, okay? Aysen has been called, madam clerk.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Concierge Blay?
Oui.
Councillor Shirelli?
Yes.
Councillor Hume?
Yes.
Councillor Cadre?
Yes.
Councillor Holmes?
No.
Councillor Deans?
Yes.
Councillor Alshantiiri?
Yes.
Councillor Moffat?
No.
Councillor Tierney?
No.
Concierge Manette?
Oui.
Councillor Blous?
No.
Concierge Fleury?
No.
Councillor Chernoshenko? Concierge Duroch? Councillor Harder? Councillor Thompson? Councillor McCrae?
Yes.
Councillor Hobbs?
Yes.
Councillor Hubley?
Yes.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Yes.
Councillor Clark?
No.
Councillor Egler? Mayor Watson? Fourteen yes, seven nays.
So the item carried. Thank you very much. And the amendment carried. So the item carried as amended, correct? Yes? So the motion carried, fourteen, seventeen, on the item. Is the item carried? Carry? Okay, thank you. The, yes. Okay. Yes. As noted, yes, we have, we have the amendment, councillor. Councillor Clark?
Yes, they would like the...
So the same councillor who voted against the item, now we, now we can move on to item number two, 2014 Childcare Service Plan, councillor Fleury.
Monsieur le Président, I wanted to make some points. I didn't have the opportunity to mention it to the committee, I had to leave, but this is not really questions for Aaron. I wanted to talk about the group, it did a lot of good work. I think we're on the right path in terms of providing capabilities to young people who have a low-income family. So I think it's very, very clear now. There are many residents and groups that approached me, asking specifically if francophone services would be maintained through the transition. I had many discussions with Aaron and other city staff, and I'm very pleased, in terms of representation, it won't be necessarily a guaranteed percentage, but if a child is francophone and is eligible for services, we'll be able to ensure that the services are provided in French. So percentages will vary according to the number of children and services that are available. So with that transition, I think, Aaron, you can maintain it. It won't be easy, because you're changing the whole system, but I think that the objective is clear. The family that has access to something that is really needed, and if they are low-income, they will have access to childcare services. And thank you for your work in reassuring the community in terms of francophone services. And I expect also to have an annual report on what's happening in your area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Fleury. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you very much, Mr. Acting Mayor. And I just wanted to take a moment to, I know council was willing to just simply pass this, but I did want to take a moment just to thank not just Aaron and his staff, certainly, although they've been doing tremendous work on this file, and it's obviously a very difficult one, one that's near and dear to a lot of parents' hearts, and we're talking about childcare, but also our stakeholder panel and the expert panel that have been convened to help guide us through this modernization. And across the four community consultations and the web survey, I want to thank the over 600 parents who participated in helping to craft what will be the future for childcare, at least as far as the City of Ottawa's portion is concerned. So I did want to take that opportunity to thank them, and thank them for their patience, but also, as we move forward in a very managed and pragmatic fashion, crafting a childcare plan that's representative not just of the realities that we live in, but also the values that we cherish here in Ottawa. So thank you very much to all the folks who've helped and will help over the next coming several years as we continue to guide through this. Thank you very much, Mr. Acting Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Taylor, and thank you for your work on this with our staff. And to our staff, thank you very much. On the item, okay? Okay, thank you very much. Second item we have is number seven, zoning 1111 North River Road, and I believe councillor Clark will decide.
Yes, technically, this particular project, the massing of it fills the lot to an extent that leaves a lot to be desired. And since I'm not on planning committee, I thought I would just register my dissent here.
So can we carry the item with the dissent from councillor Clark? Thank you very much. And now we go, we have a motion, of which notice been previously given, we start with councillor, sorry, yes, motion to adopt the report first, councillor Moffat.
The report from the city clerk and solicitor entitled Status Update: Council Inquiries and Motion for the Period Ending 21st of February 2014, Community and Protective Services Committee Report 29, Environment Committee Report 27, Planning Committee Report 65A, and Transit Commission Report 24, be received and adopted as amended.
Okay, carry? Carry, thank you. Now councillor Deans and Wilkinson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Acting Chair. As has become my tradition with councillor Wilkinson, this motion asks that we declare March 8, 2014, to be International Women's Day in the City of Ottawa. And just, just a couple of words on this, the first International Women's Day was held in 1911, and in 1977, the United Nations officially called for all countries to mark a day for the recognition of women's economic, political, and social achievements. And I can tell you from my vantage point, although women have certainly come a long way in their struggle for equality, you just need to look around this council table to see that we're not there yet. And I do believe that we need to continue to make strides toward equality, not just in the political form, but in all aspects of life. And so I ask my colleagues to accept the motion and declare March 8, 2014, as International Women's Day in the City of Ottawa.
Okay, the item carried, and thank you councillor Deans for taking the lead on this item for many years on council. Thank you very much. The other council, the motion we have, motion moved by councillor Blay, second by councillor Duroch, who's the second now?
Second.
Second by councillor Clark. Councillor Blay, would you like to introduce your motion?
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm sure everyone around this table would agree that motorists who pass stop school buses... buses, whose stop sign is deployed and lights are flashing, commit an egregious act that endangers the lives of both children and the pedestrians and those who are caring for them. This motion calls for the provincial government to make the various changes to legislation to allow for cameras to be installed on the stop arms of school buses, similar to a red light camera, which would allow the police to enforce this egregious traffic violation in a much more effective and automatic way. And I would encourage everyone to make this request to the province.
Thank you very much, councillor Blay. On the motion, care? Care, thank you. Motion requires suspensions of the rules of procedure. Do we have any here? None? Notice of motion for consideration at subsequent meeting. Councillor Holmes?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. This is a motion regarding the building on Bank and Somerset that has been such a matter of contention for so many years. And the BIA in particular is very anxious to get work started on renovating this building. The owner does buy heritage buildings in the city and renovates them and restores them, one of the few people who does that. So he is to be commended for working on this building, he's done other buildings in the area. He's very interested in getting to work this spring on the outside, while he negotiates on the inside with a potential tenant and gets to work on those detailed design drawings. But this is to help show our willingness and support for him working on this building and to try and get the hoarding down as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Holmes. No, it's a notice of motion, we have no, sorry, it's a notice of motion. Okay. Motion to introduce bylaws, councillor Moffat?
The bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
Thank you. It's care, and a procedure by law, okay? And motion to adjourn, I suppose. Sorry.
I must do the confirmation bylaw first.
Come. Councillor Moffat?
That the following bylaw be read and passed.
Okay.
It's essential that I do that.
Care, yes. Okay. Motion to...
Mr. Deputy Mayor, did we do inquiries yet?
We're doing it right now, councillor. So we're asking for, do you have inquiries, councillor? Would you like to introduce it?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Can we have a, can we receive a full rationale on why OC Transport buses are not required to stop at all railway lines? Is the decision based on route timing or financial reasons? And if so, what would be the impacts of changing that rules so that buses are required to stop at all railway lines, such as is done in Gatineau? Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Manet. Any other inquiries? No? Yes, councillor Fleury?
This is a follow-up inquiry to today's response about OC Transport. So it reads as follow. Si un client a problème avec la carte...
If a client has a problem with the presso card, should they address it with customer service at the OC Transport? And can customer service respond to all the needs in terms of the card? And if there's a problem with the card while on the bus, does the driver have the discretion to let the client get into the bus? Thank you.
There's just one question. Okay. Any other inquiries? No? Okay. Councillor Moffat, for adjournment?
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of the 26th February 2014 be adjourned.
Thank you. German care? Thank you.